Certain non-controversial items on the commission's consent agenda, planning staff and the planning commission applies the following criteria. First, the request conforms with the city 2015 land use plan. Second, the planning staff recommends approval of the request. And third, there are no audience members present or written comments received in opposition to the request. And fourth, the application meets all conditions and requirements of the ordinance. Once the consent agenda items are approved, you are free to leave. For the regular agenda, the following normal public hearing procedure will be followed. By first requesting, planning staff to present a brief report on each item. Second, the petitioner will be requested to come forward and make a statement or answer questions. After the petitioner, anyone from the audience who wishes to address a particular agenda item shall be recognized. Then, the planning commission will discuss the matter further and take appropriate action. We ask that anyone addressing the planning commission, other than staff, move to the podium microphone, identify themselves, and state their address for the record. Please limit your comments to less than five minutes. As a courtesy to everyone here tonight, we ask you please either turn off or silence your cellphone and pager. This meeting is being televised on channel sixteen and will be rebroadcast Saturday at ten a.m., Tuesday at seven p.m., and Wednesday at one a.m. Thank you for your cooperation. Item items. Item number one is approval of the July eleventh, two thousand and seven minutes of the regular meeting. Item two is Platts. Item three is an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property at North Ebenezer Avenue and Madison Street. From the RS two residential district to the I one light industrial, C four planned commercial O office, O general office, RD residential and RS two residential district, petition number two zero zero seven dash zero six two five A and amending the official city zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. That item has been deferred. Item four, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property at four thousand Southwest Avenue from unzoned to the S institutional district, petition number two thousand seven dash zero six dash three three and amending the official city zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Item five, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property at four twenty East Eighth Street. From the I two general industrial district to the C three central business district, petition number two thousand seven dash zero seven dash zero two and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Item six, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property at East Madison Street and from the RA one residential district to the Canterbury Heights Plan Development District, petition number two thousand seven dash zero seven dash zero seven and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Item seven is an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property at three 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 South Summit Avenue. From the RA two residential district to the S institutional district, petition number two thousand seven dash zero seven dash one three and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. And item seven has been withdrawn. Item eight, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property, one block west of Hughes Avenue from the AG Agriculture District to the RS one residential and the RD residential district, petition number two thousand seven dash zero seven dash two three and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Item nine is a conditional use permit in the C four planned commercial district to construct retail trade and service on a site greater than one acre in size, East Forty First Street and South Sycamore Avenue. Item ten, conditional use permit in the RS two residential district for a daycare center at thirteen twelve South Bonson Avenue. Item eleven is a conditional use permit in the C four planned commercial district for on sale alcohol beverage establishment at forty seven oh sevens East Twenty Sixth Street in Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Item twelve is a conditional use permit in the I one general industrial district for retail trade and service at eleven twenty two North Weber. Item thirteen, conditional use permit in the C two general commercial district for an on sale alcohol alcoholic beverage establishment at three twenty five North Minnesota Avenue. And item thirteen has been requested to move to the regular agenda. Item fourteen is a conditional use permit in the C two general commercial district for motor vehicle repair at three hundred South Cleveland Avenue. Item fifteen, special use permit in sub area A River Crossing Plan Development District for an on sale alcohol establishment as an accessory use to a restaurant at five zero zero five South Western Avenue. And item sixteen is a special use permit in sub area A Beacon Center PD Plan Development District to allow on sale alcohol establishment accessory use to a restaurant at forty eight twenty five South Louise Avenue. Is there anyone from the audience who would want any of those moved to the regular agenda?
Good evening. Steve Randall representing planning staff. As you mentioned, item thirteen has been requested to be moved to the regular agenda by staff. Letter of opposition was received.
And item three deferred and seven withdrawn, correct?
That's correct. Item three is deferred and item seven is withdrawn.
All right. Is there any commissioners that would like to move any to the regular agenda from the consent agenda? All right, here none. Is there a motion to approve the revised consent agenda?
I'll move to approve the revised consent agenda. I'll second.
All right, there's a motion in second. All those in favor say aye. Close same sign. Revised consent agenda is approved. Before the regular agenda, we will be adding item number thirteen, moving that from the consent agenda. Item number twenty, which is an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, a major amendment, petition number two thousand seven dash zero six dash two four to chapter one five dot four five dot zero seven zero Plan Development District, Southern Hills PD, Fifty Seventh Street and MacArthur Lane, allowing changes in land use as reflected in revised sub area regulation and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. That has been withdrawn. So item twenty is withdrawn. Item thirty is a final development plan in sub area A Forty First Street ten Plan Development District to law construction of sixty eight twin homes, twin home units, phase one and sixty six units, phase two at West Forty First Street and Grinnell Avenue. Item thirty has been deferred by the applicant. And then item thirty-four, which is preliminary subdivision plan in various zoning districts for the legacy addition at North Ebenezer Avenue, that has been deferred also by the So with those changes, is there a motion to approve the revised regular agenda?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. The revised regular agenda is approved. So the first item on our regular agenda tonight will be item thirteen. It was moved from the consent agenda, and that's a conditional use permit in the C two general commercial district for an on sale alcohol beverage establishment, three twenty five North Minnesota Avenue. Staff report, please.
Good evening. Steve Randall representing planning staff on this and other items this evening. Just a reminder to the audience now, the consent agenda has been approved except for the items mentioned by the chairperson, and you're free to leave. If you have any questions, you can ask staff about which items.
Three, thirteen, and seven, I guess.
All right. Item thirteen, we have an application from Steve Booty and Sixth and Minnesota LLC on a half acre site to proposing to locate an on sale alcohol establishment in a tenant space of an existing building. We have an existing building that with a tenant space of sixteen hundred and seventy-seven square foot available for a casino and a laundromat adjacent to it. The casino is accessible only from the east side of the building and no other building or site improvements are proposed at this time. The applicant is proposing to meet the conditional use standards, which say that there should not be an undue concentration of similar uses in the area, should not be in an area where children could be expected to frequent, patronize, or recreate, and it should be compatible with the characteristics of surrounding uses and not injurious to surrounding properties. The application that you have in your information and shown on the screen, staff believes meets the conditions of this requirement of the conditional use and recommends approval. We did have a letter of protest coming in, opposition coming in from a neighbor, and that's included in your information addendum. And I'll just review that letter here briefly for the public. It's written to the planning commission, and it is stating that they're understanding that neighbors and themselves are proposed or are understanding what is being proposed as a bar and casino in the vacant portion of the building, and they would like the planning commission to take into consideration that this building is close to the Volunteers of America Childcare and Family Literacy Center, and it's also directly across the street from a city park. They would like the residents not to be subjected to any more alcohol use in this neighborhood. The laundry is used by people in the neighborhood, and that's right next to the proposed alcohol They go on to make personal comments, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to review that with you. The letter is signed by Peter Wyland, four oh four North Spring Avenue, number two oh two. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Steve?
Steve, I'm confused about the applicant's request for a on sale liquor license and a casino. If I'm not mistaken, I believe the rules regarding casinos have to be a certain distance from parks, schools, and such like that.
The distance requirement is set by the council, and the council is the one that would decide the casino issue. What we're looking at this evening is an application for on sale alcohol, which would qualify them to apply for the casino.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Steve Booty, thirty-five oh one South Judy Avenue. I really don't have much to say, other than we're applying to transfer a liquor license that an investment group that I'm involved in currently owns. That license is over at the license to the Waterfall Plaza right now. Originally, we bought two licenses for that facility, if you will, or that development. And we've never done anything with the other one, and we're hoping to transfer it to this location and open up a little, little bar and casino. That's about as simple as it gets, I guess.
All right. Questions for Steve? Guess not. Thank you very much.
Excuse me.
Oh, hang on just a second.
I'm sorry. We were talking here. Steve, if a casino was not allowed there, or is your intention still to have a on sale bar there?
Excuse me, Ken. Could you repeat that?
If a casino was not allowed there by the council, would you still pursue the on sale liquor license there?
No.
So your proposal is dependent on both of them coming together.
Yep.
Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Thanks.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? All right. If there's none, is there a commission action?
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion to approve the conditional use with the three stipulations.
I'll second that motion.
All right. There's a motion in the second. Is there any commission discussion?
I feel with the neighborhood a little bit on that, but I think it's on a Minnesota Avenue. I guess I quite honestly not sure what the rules to casinos are. I'm under the impression that I'm not sure if that would qualify. If the casino doesn't go, I don't think, it sounds like Steve not doesn't intend to put a bar there. With that thought in mind, I could, I could support it, support his application.
Any other discussion? All right. For item thirteen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Item thirteen is recommended for approval. Our next item on the regular agenda is item number seventeen, which is an amendment of conditional use permit in the C two general commercial district to allow an on sale alcohol establishment at one zero zero one West Eleventh Street. Staff report.
Thank you. As you may recall, in November of two thousand and six, the planning commission did approve a conditional use permit for an on sale establishment with six conditions. I think I forgot to introduce myself. My name is Shawna Gold. I'm representing planning staff on various items this evening. The planning commission last month reviewed the conditional use permit as well as earlier in the year. So in two thousand and seven, the applicant has received two favorable reviews. The applicant has requested the conditions on the current conditional use permit be amended because these restrictions are a burden to the ongoing business. Additionally, the city council has reviewed and renewed the beer license until June two thousand and eight. Because the applicant is burdened by the current conditions, staff is recommending the following amended conditions. First, that the hours of operation are limited to those of state law for beer licenses. The food service is available during the hours of operation. Second, that a security management plan is updated annually with a crime prevention officer. And three, that customers under the age of twenty-one are not allowed in the establishment after eleven p.m. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for Shawna?
Shawna, I think at our last reviews, there haven't been any police reports on that particular location for a year.
No, no calls of any relevance to the operation. There was like an accident where, you know, if someone's driving by, they'll look for the, the first address that they see, and so that may be technically a police call to that address, but nothing relevant to the ongoing business at this location.
Shawna, and I think, I think you had answered this for me earlier, but for everybody else's knowledge, if there were to continue or a pattern of problems were to develop again, that is an enforcement issue that we could bring back to the planning commission?
Through a revocation process. Yep. Yes, that is correct. It could come back if it is, becomes a problem at that location again.
Thank you, Shawna.
Thank you, Shawna. Is the applicant here, please?
Mulgeta and Dayo, one zero zero one West Eleventh Street, Alibar restaurant.
Anything to add to staff report?
No, I don't have any.
All right. Any questions of the applicant?
Think you've been doing a real good job this, this last year. Thank you.
I'd just like to add, thank you for making this very easy for us this evening. Thank you for doing everything you said you were going to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? All right. If none, is there a commission action?
I'll move for approval. With the stipulations. I'll second.
All right. There's a motion in the second. Any commission discussion? All right. On item seventeen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Item seventeen is approved. Item eighteen is a review of the conditional use permit in the C two general commercial district for off track betting and on sale alcohol at three zero one South Garfield Avenue, suite number seven. Staff report.
Last year, the planning commission did approve this conditional use, and with stipulations. First, that it be approved, approved for this applicant only. Second, there being a security management plan approved, which it was. And third, that future signs or changes in existing sign panels for the subject establishment shall not have exposed neon or flashing lights that can be seen for residential uses. And the last one being a one-year review is required by the planning commission regarding code enforcement violations, police citations, existing hours of operation, and neighborhood comments. Staff has reviewed these items with the applicant and with the appropriate departments. The police review indicated thirteen calls to the neighborhood, none of which was directly related to the business, and we've had no complaints in the zoning office regarding the use on the property. It does appear that it is compatible with the surrounding uses, and staff is recommending a favorable review.
All right. Any questions for Steve? Steve, so we are acknowledging a favorable review and then a motion to accept your report.
That's correct.
Is the applicant here?
Randy Bodine, three oh one South Garfield Avenue, suite seven and eight, Amwest Entertainment and Writers Up OTB. No real comments. I guess the only thing I would say, that if you were to ask the vendors, the people that sell us Folgers coffee and Coca-Cola would probably say I'm a lot better customer than the beer people. We haven't had any issues and don't look to.
Any questions for Randy? All right. Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? All right. Is there commission action on item eighteen?
Mr. Chair, I'll move for approval or acknowledge the review.
Second. All right. There's a motion in the second. Is there commission discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. On item number eighteen, we've acknowledged, we've accepted the staff report. Item nineteen is an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property at South Ebenezer Avenue and West Graceland Court from the RS two residential district to the RA one residential district, petition number two thousand seven dash zero six dash two zero and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Staff report.
Thank you. The applicant is proposing to develop medium or moderate density residential housing. After public comments were considered, the planning commission did defer action last month at the July eleventh meeting, asking the applicant to provide a concept plan depicting the development plan. The location is on the north side of Skunk Creek at Ebenezer Avenue. The city of Sioux Falls is, includes a capital improvement plan to extend Ebenezer, and the applicant is encouraged to continue discussions regarding the alignment of Ebenezer across Skunk Creek with the city engineering office. Staff notes that the applicant has indicated a concept plan for development and has been provided to the planning commission or addendum packets. Because the application provides the development plan as in keeping with the requirements for the rezoning request, staff does recommend approval of the rezoning. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for Shawna? Thank you. The applicant, please.
Hello. Tom Weisman, seventy-five twelve West Fifteenth Street. After our last month's meeting, we did request a meeting with all the surrounding homeowners and landowners of the properties out there. We personally went in and invited them at the meeting to make sure we had good attendance. Surprisingly, we had a hundred percent people attend at the meeting over there. We answered all the questions they had, and, and everybody was pleased with what we're trying to do out there, and there was no complaints, and we addressed every issue everybody, everybody had there. Excuse me. So it went real well.
Okay. Questions for Tom?
Tom, I, a question. That development was originally planned, I believe, as a twin home project.
That's correct.
Were those private streets that were put in there?
This is an association, and some of them are, are, some are private and some will be owned by the city coming into the development. Then they turn into private.
Will your property use some of the private streets, or will the private streets belong to the twin homeowners?
It'll be, the whole property will be association.
Including your property?
Right.
Will become part of the twin home association?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Other questions for Tom?
Tom, were they able to see the concept plan that we had here?
Yeah. They seen every piece of literature we had available at that time and some more that we didn't introduce to the city here. We've, you know, so right there on the concept plan we have there on the interior lots, we had some pasted on ones in there where they're proposed to be. We didn't get the drawing on the inside here to the city here, but the homeowners did see exactly what we intended to do. The only reason that they're not on the inside, the condos, is we're just trying to calculate the sizes of them to go, to go forward on the project.
Tom, is your intention to develop this property as you showed these people on the concept plan?
Yes, it is.
And if you were to change that, would you go back to these folks and share that with them?
Sure. Actually, the people around there are excited us to be there, and, you know, it's, you know, we own a lot of the twin homes beside them too, so it's in our best interest to, to keep everything flowing smoothly out there.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on this item? Don't see any. Is there commission action?
Mr. Chair, I would make the motion to approve the result.
I will second.
Some motion in the second. Is there any discussion? All right. On item number nineteen, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Item nineteen is recommended for approval.
Mr. Chair?
Tom, I'd like to thank you for taking that thirty days to go back there and work with those folks a little bit, make sure they understood it. Thank you.
All right. Item twenty, which has been withdrawn, but I'll read the description. It's an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, a major amendment, petition number two thousand seven dash zero six dash two four to chapter fifteen dot four five dot zero seven zero, Plan Development Districts, Southern Hills PD at Fifty Seventh Street and MacArthur Lane, allowing changes in the land use as reflected in revised sub area regulations and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Again, that's number twenty, and that's, has been withdrawn. Item twenty-one is an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property at fifty-five hundred West Twenty Sixth Street from the RS two residential district to the S institutional district, petition number two thousand seven dash zero six dash three two and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. Staff report.
This is a, approximately a six acre site, and the applicant is Resurrection Lutheran Church. The property is only partially developed with the church facilities at the present time. To the north side of the property, we have single family residential in the RS two district, as well as to the south and to the east. To the west side, there's a drainage way, and then there's a single family residential beyond in the RS one residential district. The applicant is proposing to rezone the subject property to allow future church and other institutional uses for possible development in the S institutional zoning district. Specifically, the applicant wishes to lease a portion of the church property to Dakota Systems Incorporated, which is, represents Verizon Wireless for the construction of a telecommunications facility consisting of a pole with a cross on top and equipment building at the base of the pole. Staff has provided a comparison of the RS two and S institutional districts for uses allowed. Telecommunications is allowed in the RS two zoning district, which it is now, but only as an, as antenna support structure application. In other words, it could be located on a church steeple, in a rooftop, on a parapet, some sort of building, or even a bell tower. However, in the S institutional district, a telecommunications tower would be allowed by conditional use, and that, I believe that's what the applicant is proposing. The applicant has had a meeting with the neighborhood, scheduled that meeting, and should be prepared to report the results of that meeting to you tonight, but basically presenting to them the possibility of a telecommunications tower on the property. They have no other plans for development of the property that they are proposing to you or in a concept to us. So that's why I indicated in your report what the optional uses permitted, permitted special and conditional would be in the S institutional district. They're pretty similar to RS two. It's just kind of going back forth between either permitted special or conditional uses. And if you have any questions on that, I could clarify. Unless the neighborhood is concerned about institutional uses in their backyard, staff is recommending approval of the application because we have found in the past that those uses are compatible with single family residential, and we've had no other calls on this from the neighborhood. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Steve? Steve, our issue tonight isn't dealing with the telecommunications tower. We're just dealing with the rezone. To move that tele, telecommunications, they'd have to come back for a conditional use permit.
That's correct. In the S institutional district, the telecommunications tower requires a conditional use permit and a public hearing with you.
Thank you, Steve. Other questions? All right. Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Reverend Christopher D. Asher, sixty-two oh five Westminster.
Reverend Christopher D. Asher, sixty-two oh five Westminster. I am also the pastor of Resurrection Lutheran Church. I'll be speaking for us tonight. It is, as you heard, our intention to rezone this to the institutional district. We did have a public meeting on the twenty-fourth at our church, held at six-thirty. Of the two-hundred-and-fifty households that letters were sent out to, thirteen showed up for that meeting. So, all of that was positive. In fact, one of the things that came out of it was they preferred the institutional, those who were there, because it, it took down the possibility of residential being developed in the back lot, north side of the property. So, most of them were amiable to that. One thing I will point out, we do not have anything that we have submitted as far as the plans of the congregation. However, we are working to develop funding and, and other means for constructing a daycare and other educational facilities to the north of our church. And that's really the purpose behind this that didn't come out in the report. And so, that is also a portion of why we're rezoning to institutional to better fit where our congregation will be, how we will be using the property.
Any questions?
Is that shared with the neighbors when you met with them about the daycare?
It, it was shared, we were also very upfront with the Verizon Tower and what it would look like and other than the fact that they wanted to know where it was, no negative comments were heard.
Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? All right, see you now, is there commission action, item twenty-one?
I'll move for approval of the rezone on item twenty-one.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion in the second, any commission discussion?
It's nice to hear that the neighbors were all, listened favorably to, to it. I would caution, you might want to get some of the rules. Your desire for the rest of this land, it obviously isn't a single family, but there is a fall distance. When it comes to residential, you can't build within a fall distance of a tower. I'm not sure about the other buildings that you speak about, but you might want to check into that.
Other discussion? All right, on item twenty-one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Item twenty-one is recommended for approval. Item twenty-two is a conditional use permit in the C4 Plan Commercial District for motor vehicle service station, gas dispensing, gas dispensing station and building expansion at forty-one oh four South Louise Avenue, Sioux Falls, South Dakota, five-seven-one oh six. Staff report.
This site is approximately a nine acre property that they're requesting approval of. A large commercial development on a large site greater than an acre requires a conditional use review by yourselves. What they're proposing to do is add on to their building to the, to the backside and provide additional parking as well as providing a new motor vehicle service station with gas dispensing up front in the existing parking lot. And so, their plan indicates a revision to the existing parking lot to redirect traffic and indicate new landscaping where necessary and on the backside of the property to provide the requirements of the zoning district for setbacks and for landscaping and for parking. Because the perimeter is not changing with respect to the Forty-Ninth Street Designer View District or with respect to existing landscaping that we know of, staff is recommending approval of the conditional use permit for the expansion project and for the addition of the gas dispensing station in the front yard. The applicant is in the process of reviewing the plans with Building Services right now and they could perhaps respond to any questions that you might have about the, the plan details. But as I said, they do intend to meet the requirements of the zoning district. If they have difficulty, say with the setback issue, we feel that they can resolve that with Building Services. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Steve?
Steve, when you talk about some additional parking to the back of the building, are you talking to the north side of the building or on the west side of the building?
I'd be to the northwest, northwest corner. They're taking some additional property from Sioux Empire Mall Development there, which is vacant at the present time and developing that into a building addition and additional parking.
Thank you.
So Steve, you're basically saying that the, the curb cuts on Forty-Ninth and Louise stay really the same that they are right now and everything that's designed on this site is in conformance with the Forty-Ninth Street design? Does that fall within the Forty-Ninth Street design district?
It does, it does. They had, those existing conditions are not changing except for one curb cut on Forty-Ninth Street. They're keeping that curb cut, but they're shifting it to line up with a curb cut across the street at Pier One, which is actually improving the traffic situation on the street.
Yep, thank you.
So that would move it to the west of where it is now? All right, thank you, Steve. Is the applicant here, please?
I'm Bree Cooper, Assistant Site Director representing Hy-Vee, fifty-eight twenty West Town Parkway in West Moines. We're in agreement with staff and we are currently working with city staff, Building Services to meet all the requirements that the city has for this district and, and for this parcel. Questions?
Any questions? I guess not, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? All right, if none, is there action on item twenty-two?
I'll move for approval on item twenty-two.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion in the second, any commission discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Item twenty-two is approved. Item twenty-three is a conditional use permit in the RS1 Residential District for an assisted living center at seventy-four hundred West Twenty-Second Street. Staff report.
The applicant here is proposing to change the land use from a single-family home to an assisted living facility. You may recall that in previous months, the applicant was proposing a daycare center, which was denied by the planning commission. The assisted living facility is defined differently in the zoning ordinance when you compare it to the licensing agency, which is the state of South Dakota. But basically, it is any building agency home place, which is maintained and operated to provide personal care and services which meet the need beyond basic food, shelter and laundry in a freestanding, physically separate facility, which is not otherwise required to be licensed by the state of South Dakota. Staff notes that a license will be required as the applicant has provided, will be providing assistance and care with an onsite residence, resident nurse. With the change in land use from single-family home to assisted living facility, staff does note that licensing documentation should be provided to Building Services and has recommended that as a condition of approval. The conditional use standard for an assisted living facility is as follows. Such uses shall be located in areas where their impact on adjacent properties would not be detrimental to their, due to their traffic flow or parking area. Such uses located in RS1, RS2 and RD Residential Districts shall have maximum building height of two stories. The existing single-family home is two stories and provides the necessary onsite parking as required with the existing garage space on the site. The applicant has provided information regarding interior remodeling required by the Building Services Department. Staff notes that landscaping in the southeast corner is not an indication of signage as signage is not allowed for an assisted living facility in the RS1 Residential District. Information provided for the conditional use permit is specific to the applicant and their intended operation. Specifically, the applicant has provide, is providing care to up to eight residences. If future owners would change and the operation plan change, planning commission should consider another look or review of that conditional use permit and staff has included that as a condition of approval. Because the application is, provides clarity to indicate the location, nature and extent of the work proposed and requires a complete plan check by Building Services and zoning prior to building permit, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use with three conditions. First, that a change in use permit is provided by Building Services. Two, that prior to a change in use, the applicant provides a certificate of license provided by the state of South Dakota and that would be the Health Department of the state. And three, that the conditional use permit is granted for this applicant only. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for Shawna?
Shawna, as I read the, a letter that came with this, there will be no change to the outside of this building whatsoever?
Correct.
No additional parking space, it'll have the same yard it's got today?
That is correct. The parking requirement based on, is based on how many beds the facility has. So, an eight-bed facility would require three parking spaces.
I also read somewhere that the residents have to be a minimum of fifty-five years old or older?
The applicant is here this evening to, to discuss the age of the applicant or of the residences that they intend.
Thank you.
Other questions for Shawna?
Assisted living center though could meet a variety of definitions, couldn't it, relative to ages of just one?
Right, in, in the zoning definition, it includes apartment-type living for those over the age of fifty-five or persons subject to chronic illness or infirmities that do not need the level of nursing care provided in a licensed nursing home. So, but I'll, I'll tell you that this ordinance and definition was adopted before assisted livings had to be licensed by the state of South Dakota. So, it goes on to say that assisted living need not be licensed by the state of South Dakota. And that's true only, but soon as they start providing, it depends on the level of service, how much licensing they need.
So, by requiring them to have a, a license for the state of South Dakota specific to an assisted living center would drive what sort of boundaries? Would it be fifty-five and older, would it be?
Right, what kind of services they can and cannot provide and, you know, the, the structural needs, you know, handicapped accessibility and things like that would be all part of the licensing by the state.
Okay, so that provides a measure of protection for what will actually end up in this facility?
Right, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you Shawna. Is the applicant here, please?
Verlin Fast, seventy-four hundred West Twenty-Second Street. I believe I can bring some clarity here as I get through this. On July fourth, I thought of assisted living. I had been in this field before and, and am familiar with it. I immediately withdrew the appeal to the city council for the daycare center. I did this mainly due to all the concerns and issues it had caused in the neighborhood. The issues and concerns then were increased noise, traffic and the parking lot. By changing the use from this daycare center to assisted living facility, I could eliminate all of these issues. First concern was the noise. And I should clarify, it would be seven residents and one RN according, there could be up to eight people living in the home. But the seven elderly, elderly people would be living out their golden years, not yelling and screaming in the backyard. I'm sure the city of Sioux Falls has never had any complaints with elderly concerning noise. Traffic, they do not have their own vehicles, they do not drive, they need assistance to live. The registered nurse would be the only one living in the home. The residents have their rides arranged for in advance, mostly by paratransit. The parking lot, we're obviously not requesting a parking lot as the home already has more than enough required parking areas. A concern that I was asked and, and which you guys have asked tonight too, is the ages. Our policies and procedures manual, it's about, it's a little over a hundred pages in length. It has, it is, it's a copy of Dahl Rommel's Assisted Living Policies and Procedures. That's what the state of South Dakota suggested, it's one of the, the best ones in the state to mirror. It does not suggest an age or age requirement, I believe they would consider that discrimination at this time, so my answer is, there's no age. They are physician recommended or ordered to go to or to live in an assisted living facility and they are evaluated on their needs and their individual needs a month after and then annually after that. So, there's many policies and procedures that must be in place and followed to become state licensed and of course, this is one of the conditions for this permit is that I am state licensed. Our family of six with four teenagers, three of them driving, making a total of five cars plus twelve kids being dropped off and picked up currently in our home daycare has some impact as far as noise and traffic. Several people in the development having commercial vehicles parked on the street constantly also has a great impact. Having an assisted living home with one RN living in the home, her being the only one able to drive in a fifty-eight hundred square foot home with two double driveways has no impact. The last concern that I know of is that it's simply a business in our neighborhood. Like I said, there's no changes being done on the exterior of the home, there is no signings being requested. Businesses usually have signs. This assisted living home does not look like a typical business. It already looks like what it's going to look like. It looks like a beautiful home and it all, it always will. It's difficult having a fifty-eight hundred square foot home in the five-hundred thousand price range that city assessed at five-hundred-nineteen thousand when the other homes in this development range from two-hundred to four-hundred thousand and have an average assessment of three-hundred-nineteen thousand. That has had a great impact on our resale value and has caused us financial hardship. I spoke with Mr. and Mrs. Wyden today. She lives at, they live at eighteen oh one South Dorothy. This is directly across the street from Prairie Crossings Assisted Living Facility that's at eighteen oh six South Dorothy. This is just on the other side of Memorial School, this is a twenty-four bed assisted living home. I asked them, they were out in the driveway today, I asked them, what's it like living across the street from them? And I pointed towards the, they said it's wonderful, they let us park their cars in their lot in the wintertime, it's never full. They are wonderful neighbors to have. They were unable to attend tonight due to their work obligations. Once again, it, it does not and will not impact the area. Everyone on the west side knows of the big house behind Memorial Middle School, the one with the big wraparound porch, these elderly people would love to sit out on this hundred-foot of porch. It'll stay that way. I've met the security requirements, please just grant this request so we can move forward. Don't defer it on me, just please grant it. Do you have any questions?
Question, Verlin?
Yes?
I've never been in your home. How many bedrooms do you have in that house?
You know, I, I had pulled a building permit as a homeowner so I could remove a closet and kind of start making way for this, but there's four bedrooms upstairs in the second story that would become the RN's living quarters. I would remove two of the bedrooms and make a kitchenette and family living room area. So, and there's about a thousand square foot on that second story. So, there would be four bedrooms downstairs. There's about nine bedrooms and six bathrooms.
These would be residents that would live, live there on a, a daily basis, I mean morning, noon, night and evening?
Yes.
The RN would prepare their meals?
Yes.
And be there to take care of them and such like?
Yeah, she would have relief from about five to nine every evening, so she has some time away and she would have relief on the weekends.
When I brought up that fifty-five years old, in the staff report we've got, they give a definition of an assisted living center. It says a facility to provide apartment living for persons over the age of fifty-five or, or persons subject to chronic or persons subject to chronic illness or infirmities. Obviously, you feel there's a need for an establishment like this?
On Marion Road, is it Good Samaritan there? They're adding on a huge part of their facility. I feel that I really never need to request any signage, because with just seven beds to occupy, that can be done fairly easy with referrals. Yeah, I think there's a big need. There's baby boomers coming up.
And this would be under your supervision? I mean, the RN is the person that they're running?
Yeah, she is the administrator, and...
With your supervision and...
As the sole proprietor.
Do you live right down the block?
Yeah, I live around the corner. We kind of occupy both homes right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone from the audience that'd care to speak on this item?
Chuck Point with the Ronnie Enterprises, forty-four-oh-one E Sixth Street. We're the developer of the neighborhood, and we were here for the previous application regarding daycare center, and we're here tonight. Our company's talked a lot about this. We made a decision that our formal position is that we're, at the present time, neutral. But we have to admit to you that we don't understand exactly what an assisted living center is. The definitions aren't totally clear. I've talked with two friends of mine who are in this business, both as owners and executive directors. One of the things that they said to me is, "Yeah, this type of facility has been successful in very small towns. There probably isn't anything like this in Sioux Falls." We can say, "Well, that might mean it might be successful because it's not here. Might mean it's not going to be successful because it's not marketable here." We don't know that. We don't, we are not experts in this. We don't know anybody that particularly is. But it is a question. We agree with the stipulations that the staff has proposed, the three stipulations. In addition to those, the applicant, I believe, just said that they don't need signage, and they're not asking for signage. So, we would ask for an additional stipulation that there be, instead of allowing a one-foot square sign, that no signage would be allowed. The applicant just told us that no signage would be necessary, and they're not requesting signage. Again, we're asking for no signage. And we've talked amongst ourselves at our company, and we believe that this application was represented to us initially as an application for senior citizen assisted living. So, we talked earlier, and we agreed that we would ask you to stipulate that all the residents would be sixty-five years and older. We understand that that might be a problem, but we're still asking it. We know from conversations that we've had, that you're about to hear about from neighbors, that there's a lot of consternation in the neighborhood about this. Some of it has to do with the previous application. We understand that's not what we're here to talk about tonight. But we believe that at a very minimum, every one of the stipulations that the staff has asked for are necessary. Particularly, the one that says that this conditional use permit is not assignable. We believe that those are absolutely necessary, all three of them. We also are asking you for the two additional ones, and we understand the problems with the fifth one. I'll answer any questions, and I'll be here till you vote.
Any questions for Chuck?
Chuck, when you say that your company is neutral on this, with the daycare center, I think regardless of how that had went down, you'd made a comment of trying to, of going to enforce your covenants. Whatever we do here, if we were to pass this, you'd still have that opportunity to do that, I suspect.
Yep. We agree, and as I said, we're neutral tonight. We may not be neutral tomorrow night. We're waiting to see what you do, what the stipulations are, and then the company will form its opinion tomorrow and going forward with the city council or other places. Again, you know, I think one of the things that's very important is, this has been upsetting to the neighborhood. I'm not saying that all the emotions are correct. I'm just saying that they're there, and they're real. And so, there's emotional feelings on both sides of this issue, and I think they're important. And, you know, so, we're asking you to pay particular attention, I don't have to ask you that, you always do, to the staff's recommendations, because we believe that, again, as a very minimum, they're very important.
Chuck, I know you're aware of whether we'll pass or not pass. Our decision is, can be appealed to the city council?
Yep.
And they'd have the final say on that.
Yeah, we're aware of that. Appreciate it.
I think, Chuck, just maybe a point to the two requests that you made relative to additional stipulations. I don't think we have to deal with your signage issue because freestanding signage is not allowed in RS1, so I think you...
But an on-building sign of one square foot, that I understand from the staff comments, is allowable. And my understanding is, the applicant just said that they don't need a sign. Our request is that no signage be allowed.
So, I'll ask staff to clarify that item. On the other, I just don't think we're in a position to deal with what state licensing regulations we're here for land use tonight.
I understand all the problems with it. That's not my job. My job is to do what my boss told me to do, and that's to make the request.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck. Anyone else here to speak on this item?
Can I clarify for staff this signage issue for all of us, please?
Yeah, sure. In the zoning ordinance, there's two kinds of signs, wall or building signs and freestanding signs. Freestanding signs in this district for this use are not allowed. However, in, you can have a nameplate that's one square foot on, on the building, you know, say next to your, you might think of it as...
Johnson's Family.
Exactly. That, that is allowed in that zoning district. And what Mr. Point is asking for is absolutely no signage, not even the Johnsons-type sign by their door. Thank you.
My name's Chad Sheppi. I reside at fourteen-hundred South Lindenwall Drive.
Chad?
Chad, yes. I spoke before you, a month or two here ago, at the daycare hearing. And I'm here on behalf of myself and some of the other neighbors residing in the neighborhood. A few of their concerns, you know, we really didn't know much about this. That's why we're here. We didn't know what level of care they planned on giving. Mr. Fast gave us a small little, you know, letter stating kind of what he planned on doing. Never called the neighborhood meeting. He mentioned it, but didn't, which would have been welcome. We just didn't have very, very much information on it, and kind of, the whole entire request was kind of confusing for most of us, because we just knew nothing about it. The state, apparently, you know, from what I've heard here tonight, recognized many different levels of care. We weren't sure what level of care. He talked about having seven people. Is that, you know, one level of the house, three levels of the house? We didn't, you know, he currently still, he has moved into his new house, but he still has his daycare residing at this current address. And to the best of our knowledge was, they needed to, you know, that needed to be his residence, you know, first, primary, before being able to have the daycare there. So, one question we had was, would, would he keep that daycare in that basement and have these seven residents on the main floor? Or, you know, or is he moving his daycare? You know, what's going on with that? And nothing was really brought up as far as what he was, plans on doing with his daycare is, was some of our questions. As far as like the conditional use permit that he already has for that daycare, that stipulates no signage in the front yard and everything. A few weeks back here, they were cited, got us, were cited with a citation for putting a sign out in the front yard. There was a deputy that came over and made him remove that. So, they're already, in some aspects, not following the guidelines of their first conditional use permit. I don't know exactly how, how they're enforced or followed through with. You know, I just don't know, will they continue to follow the guidelines that you guys set, or will they try to bend the rules or find loopholes, stuff like that? Because that seems like what's kind of currently been, been happening, to the best of our knowledge, and that's one of the main concerns of all the residents also. And the neighbors that are here tonight are somewhat frustrated that this is the fifth meeting that we're supposed to be scheduled for. Two were canceled by, by Mr. Fast for other reasons. And we hope that, you know, at the very least, that we can possibly defer it so that we can learn more about this, and see what kind of impact it might have on our neighborhood. You know, because it is still some form of, you know, commercial business going into a residential neighborhood. And we, we didn't know what type of deal he was going to be having going here or anything, so I guess that's kind of what we ask.
Okay. Any questions for Chad?
Chad, after hearing about it, how do, how do you feel? I mean, I got to tell you, as a commissioner here, it's got kind of a good feeling to me.
Well, I tell you, you know, there, like, some of the questions, you know, what age group, stuff like that, are the residents going to be? And I mean, it says that, you know, none of the assisted living residents will have vehicles. So, is that, is that part of the permit too, that they can't have a vehicle, or, you know, or they can't drive? We're kind of curious on that. But when Mr. Fast first approached me about this and asked me what I thought, I told him, I said, "Verlin, I believe it's a lot better idea than the forty-eight-kid daycare." But it is still a commercial business in a residential home. I guess, I've never lived next to door, next door to one before. Maybe some of you have, I don't know. So, I don't know what kind of impact it'll have on the neighborhood or as a, you know, adjacent property. I just don't know. And I suppose that could vary with what type of residents they have, what type of care they require, you know, stuff like that. I guess, I'm not sure.
Well, the only definition I think we've got to look at is either fifty-five years old or older, or subject to a chronic illness. I think we'll have to talk to staff about an enforcement issue if there was something other than what we're approving. I guess we need to find out, well, what is our enforcement mechanisms to, to correct something that...
One of the other questions we kind of had was, you know, say, for instance, they, you know, this gets approved, and they, they get in doing this, they're going to obviously be reconstructing inside of that home more for a commercial property. Say, worst-case scenario down the road, it doesn't succeed and it does fail, it's going to, and it's not transferable, what, the likeliness of being able to ever sell that property again as a single-family home are going to be less and less as the more, you know, construction and changing that goes on in there. It was another one of our concerns, too.
I think that's something Verlin would have to, you know, take a look at and say, "Am I doing the right thing here, aren't I?" It's hard for us to judge, you know, how he's thinking about that.
Yeah. And just, you know, like I say, a couple months ago, we were here for the daycare. Now, we're here for assisted living. If by chance it doesn't go through, what are we going to be here, you know, in two more months for? I feel there's a little bit of difference between somebody that wants to do an assisted living and somebody that wants to find a use for that property. This is my own kind of, my thought on it. Is it the right place for it? Maybe, maybe not. I mean, that's, that's not my decision. I guess I, you know, I've never been in the house. I don't know the layout. Is there room for seven people on one floor? Do they use three floors? I don't know how any of that works. There's just a lot of questions in all of our minds, I guess.
Okay. Any other questions for Chad? Before you take off, can you just identify who you're speaking on behalf of?
Well...
Raise your hands, just so we can see, okay?
Some of the, they're all the nearest residents to, to the property.
Okay. Thank you. Yes. Anyone else care to speak on this item? And if not, I'd like, did you want, okay. Verlin, we'll have you next, just to come up and, and a couple of questions.
I'm Herb Jones from thirteen-oh-eight South Lindenwall Drive, and I would say too, just, there just are a lot of questions that we had, and part of it was that the information that we did get seemed somewhat incomplete, and we would like to be able to find out more about it. One of the things that we had, and I think you had it in your letter here tonight, was the description of if they had seven residents in this RN, that there'd be no need for a sprinkler system in the house. But when we contacted the state on it, we got different information about that, that for assisted living, that you would need to have a sprinkler system in the state. Maybe the city doesn't require it. Those are the kind of things that we just kept, we had a lot of questions that we wondered how it works and what the requirements are.
Okay.
Question for Herb? I'm sorry, did you say the state said it didn't need a sprinkler, or it did?
No, the other way around. The letter that you had, that we had from Mr. Fast said that they, if they had seven residents and one caretaker, that they wouldn't need to have a sprinkler system in the home. And that's in a letter that's up here, I think, on your board. But when one of our members contacted the state, they said if you license it under assisted living, that you would need to have a sprinkler system in the home. But part of it is, there's some confusion about what the assisted living definition really is, at least, I think, in a lot of people's minds, because the state, as we, I, I talk to myself, too, they have six different levels of assisted living, and they have another level called, I believe it's residential living, that is not quote-unquote assisted living, but it still goes to the same office you register with them. And we had a question, is residential living fit under assisted living in Sioux Falls or not? These are just one of, some of the many questions that we've had that we're hoping to get answers to.
And Mr. Jones, none of your questions got answered tonight?
Well, we have some better idea about it, I guess, but some of these other ones that we have, we still don't know the answers to.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Jones, some of these things, as a planning commissioner, we don't deal with.
Right.
We do not get involved in licensure, building codes, per se, as it relates to fire sprinklers. Mr. Fast is going to have to comply with the most stringent of the codes, whether it's the city or the state, in getting this facility open. And he's called it an assisted living, so I don't think that, at least in our minds, we're in any way considering anything other than assisted living, not a residential condition at all, so...
I appreciate that, and I think that, for us, again, if we can have a clear understanding of what assisted living entails, and I think it's confusing, even at the state, to tell you the truth, from the little experience I've had just trying to get some answers on it, but that's what we're just trying to find out. It's our neighborhood, and we'd like to know what the plan is for it and what changes that might mean. And I know that your business isn't to do the building code. That shouldn't be yours, and that's not what your decisions are about, but those are questions, at least from the perspective of the residents, we would, we've been told in, as a part of this process, what wouldn't, wouldn't happen with the facility. Some of those things don't seem quite square with what we're hearing elsewhere.
Yeah, and as much as, I suspect some of us would like to maybe give you a better indication of what some of the specifics are, our task here tonight is to only deal with land use. And beyond that, the state's going to take over, and the city building services people will take over to make sure that it meets all those ordinances, codes, and laws at those two levels.
And again, just another question that we don't have an answer to in our minds is, is there still going to be daycare provided at this same location or not? We don't know those things, but...
I don't think this conditional use permit allows for daycare.
So, there, there wouldn't be daycare then?
I don't believe it's part of this conditional use permit.
Okay. Well, again, those are, those are just some of the many questions we had, we're hoping to get answers to, and we hope that we'd have some time to digest this once we came here, had a chance to hear what you all had to say, and be able to figure out more about where we can be on it. These people aren't opposed to assisted living. I'm not opposed to assisted living. I have family that lives in assisted living, but I'm just telling you, I think we had questions that we'd like to have addressed. We'd like to know what it means to our neighborhood, and we're hoping that you could all help us with that.
All right. Thank you, Herb.
Thank you.
I just have a quick question for Verlin. If you could come up and address the daycare issue. I guess there was a question on sprinkler, too, and a sign in the front yard. Can you just quickly?
Yeah. I had two guys out today from the state health department. One is the local guy in Sioux Falls, and the other's from the state. And my understanding was that I would not need a sprinkler system. I would not need a sprinkler system if I have two people on staff. When you go to one person on staff, the staffing of that would now require a sprinkler system. So, I do need a sprinkler system. I learned of that today.
How about the operation of the daycare that you're currently operating there?
Well, if we're changing, once the conditional use permit is received for the assisted living, I no longer have a conditional use permit as a single family with a home daycare. Am I correct?
And that it gets moved?
So... So, no, there would not be daycare there.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Verlin, if it does require a sprinkler system, do you plan on doing that?
Yeah, it does require one, so I'm planning on doing that. The number of residents would still stay the same, cause there's really only seven rooms on the main floor. That's where the residents would be. The RN lives upstairs. Being, hiring on an RN, uh, that requires a little bit of salary. So we actually want our residents in some need of assistance to generate the, the dollars needed to make seven beds work. So if that gives you somewhat of an idea of what the residents will require, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna be young people.
The sign issue, uh, do you have a problem with not having?
I have no problem with the sign issue. I don't need any sign. With seven beds to fill and, uh, and, uh, demand that there is and the hundreds of beds that are, no. No idea.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm gonna close the public testimony on, uh, on item twenty-three and, uh, look for commission action. Or discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve item number twenty-three with the three stipulations as stated by city planning staff.
Uh, would you wanna add that for stipulation about no signage?
No.
Second.
All right, there's a motion and a second with three stipulations. Is there any discussion?
I'm comfortable with the stipulations, um, as presented tonight. I do understand, uh, the issues relative to signage, but I, I just don't feel we need to, to tie that into this. It, it just doesn't concern me, so...
Agreed. Any other discussion? All right, if there isn't any, on, uh, item twenty-three, uh, with the three stipulations, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Item twenty-three is passed with the three stipulations. Item twenty-four is a conditional use permit in the C-two general commercial district to change signage limits on previously approved conditional use permit at sixteen oh five West Burnside Avenue. Staff report.
The applicants and owners are represented by Jay Snyder, Snyder Sign and Owning. The youth and regiment services are the, uh, current tenants of the indoor, and owners of the indoor bingo facility, which is requesting a signage. They're proposing an increased height for a freestanding sign on the subject property. In December of two thousand, we did approve a conditional use permit for the bingo facility, which had stipulations for approval, including limiting the sign heights to six feet. Uh, that was back in two thousand. Conditions in the neighborhood have not changed any. Uh, the really basic consideration at that time was, uh, impact on, uh, residential, uh, neighborhood, which, which it was, and a nearby park. Uh, at that time, the, uh, planning commission felt that it was reasonable to limit freestanding signage to a reduced height. Uh, this is a, a busier street now. Street improvements have been made on Burnside and this is kind of a major intersection with a gas station that did go in on the corner. So it is taking on more of a commercial characteristics. Uh, staff feels that, uh, compromised recommendation of limiting signage, new signage, freestanding signage to sixteen feet with, uh, similar conditions that were approved, uh, previously would be appropriate. So staff is recommending approval of the conditional use with two stipulations. One, the signage, uh, be limited to building wall signage and freestanding signage no greater than sixteen foot in height. And neon signage or neon building accents be prohibited. And the second stipulation came from the previous, uh, conditional use approval, business hours limited to between ten AM and eleven PM daily. And we've had no calls. That concludes staff report.
Questions for Steve? All right, thank you, Steve. Is the applicant here?
Hello, I'm Jay Snyder with Snyder Sign and Owning. When we, um, originally started looking at signage for the property, um, we kind of went by what it was zoned without knowing of the stipulation on the conditional use of the six feet overall height. When we found that out, we kind of looked over the property and since that's happened, there's some fairly large trees on the property. Between the trees and the sidewalk is where the, where the sign would, would be going. And with the six feet in overall height, we feel that it kind of limits visibility as we're going up and down the street and with the traffic flow before and after the sessions. We just feel that it'd be safer to have that ten-foot clearance underneath the sign to get it up in the air so people can view both directions underneath it. I also did, um, take some photos of signage in the area also that are within blocks. This one would be a property to the west.
How tall would that be? How tall would you say that sign is?
I would estimate that's over thirty feet in height. It's been there for quite a long time, so it was probably grandfathered before any current zoning.
Jeff's nodding his head, yes, he must know.
I'm guessing thirty years or better.
You're not showing your age, Jeff.
Would that be a sixteen footer?
That one there is probably getting into the twenty-foot area. This is one directly across the street from the property with exposed neon on it. Ours would be just internally fluorescent lit. And this is directly to the east at the log cabin. And I would guess that one would be right in the sixteen-foot area.
Thank you.
And similar with the Moose Lodge.
All right, uh, any questions for Jay? I don't believe so, thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action on item twenty-four?
I'll move to approve item twenty-four with the two stipulations.
A second.
There's a motion and a second, is there any discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign, item twenty-four is approved. Item twenty-five is a conditional use permit in the C-two commercial, general commercial district for an on-sale alcoholic beverage establishment at three thousandth South Minnesota Avenue. Staff report.
Thank you. The applicant is proposing this on-sale establishment, providing wine tasting in a club room located on the mezzanine in the New Hy-Vee grocery store. For our conditional use standards, we have three criteria that we look at. First, that it will not create an undue concentration. Staff notes there are bars located in the area. This use is not intended to be a bar. The applicant wishes to host wine tasting classes in a meeting room on the second floor of the building. Uh, the grocery store does have a full-service restaurant within this store and consumption of the alcohol would take place in the, uh, meeting room on the second floor, which is considered a public place and does require an on-sale, uh, license. The second criteria is that it's not an area where children could be expected to frequent patronize or recreate. The wine tasting should not be an attraction to children. However, a security management plan should be approved by the crime prevention officer. Three, that it's compatible with surrounding chara- characteristics and not injurious to surrounding properties. The area is commercial and the added use is within the building store and does not, uh, appear to be injurious. Staff has requested a floor plan for a better understanding of the request. One was received late this afternoon, um, and is presented, uh, before you. This is a floor plan of the second floor club location. Um, and if you are familiar with the New Hy-Vee, you can see those, uh, tables and chairs up there on the second floor and that's where the wine tasting club would be located. Because the applicant has provided clarity to indicate the location, nature and extent of the work proposed and requires a complete plan check by zoning building services prior to building, obtaining a building permit, staff does recommend approval of the conditional use permit with two applica- uh, two conditions. First, that the alcohol service is limited to the location indicated on the floor plans. And two, that a security management plan is approved by the crime prevention officer. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for Shawna?
It's raining.
It's raining.
Yay! Hey, roll my windows up.
Thank you, Shawna. Is the applicant here, please?
Yes, I'm Bree Cooper, representing Hy-Vee as the Assistant Site Director. Um, we agree with all the staff comments. Um, the wine tasting classes are scheduled events that we'll be having in the club room. Similar, this is the calendar I picked up from the store today. Um, they set times when all these things will be happening. It's, uh, in conjunction with the wine and spirits department that's on the other side of the building. It's a secure location, the stairs go up, if you're familiar with the store, right off the front doors. And it's a very nice room where they will, um, have these classes for people enjoy.
Any questions?
So your intent is to only have it on that second floor then?
That's right, yes.
When Meredith, Jeff and I go shopping with our wives, are we allowed up into the club room till we're done shopping?
Well, they allow, I don't think so.
That's not gonna be open.
I was, I was just there tonight and a woman got a sample of cheese from the deli, you know, over there on the deli side. And she goes, oh, she had no idea who I was. She goes, wouldn't this be great if I had some wine? Yes, it would.
Great idea.
All right, any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? All right, if there isn't any, is there commission action?
I'll move for approval with, uh, two stipulations of item number twenty-five.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion?
Do you feel that there's any need to have a third stipulation, um, limiting it to inside the building and, and on the second floor? Is that something anybody feels is necessary? It's, see, I'm fairly comfortable just because it says as located on the floor plans provided. So that, that makes me comfortable, I believe, if staff is comfortable with that. Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, on item twenty-five, all those in favor say aye.
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 Pose same sign, item twenty-five is approved. Item twenty-six is a conditional use permit in the S-institutional District to allow student housing lying within a hundred and fifty feet of a residential district at twenty-four oh four South Euclid. Staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This particular site, as well as others around the Augustana campus, was recently rezoned to the S-institutional District. It does have an existing single-family home on the site, which the applicant is proposing to provide student housing. The garage on the site is indicated to be removed. Adjacent to the east is parking for multifamily housing. However, this current plan does not include a surface parking lot. The subject property is mid-block and is adjacent to other residential driveways in the neighborhood. The additional housing will change the parking plan for the campus. This theme house will be, uh, have both designated sp- spaces on the site and in other campus parking lots. Uh, they have provided a parking plan to us regarding, uh, the number of spaces provided onsite as well as designated and reserved spaces for theme house students. Additional housing, uh, excuse me, the applicant is proposing a unique style of student housing known as theme housing. The theme house program provides housing for students with a common academic program. The housing is operated and maintained by the college. The applicant did host a neighborhood meeting. Uh, the applicant did note that there was discussions with, uh, a neighbor regarding property values on, and on-street parking. There was an attendee at the neighborhood meeting who was concerned about neighborhood parking and parking lots on this particular site and was opposed to such a change. They didn't wanna have a parking lot next door. Uh, that particular person also had called planning staff and noted that they are not opposed to the theme house but would like the opportunity, if a parking lot was proposed, to be able to come before you and, uh, express opposition. So because the application has provided clarity to indicate location, nature and extent of the work proposed and requires a complete plan check by building and planning services, uh, prior to building permit, staff does recommend approval of this conditional use permit with two stipulations. The first is that any additional surface parking lot would require review and approval by the planning commission. And two, that the theme house is owned and operated by Augustana College. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for Shawna?
Shawna, the neighbor that called, was he referring to removing the house and making a parking lot out of the whole lot?
No, he was concerned parking is allowed in the rear yard. And he was concerned that their backyard would be, of the house that we're talking about, would be changed into a parking lot. And at this time, that is not the proposal. Although, um...
Has the applicant, uh, indicated how many students they planned on putting in this house?
They're here to answer those questions.
My question is if, uh, by the number of students in the house, does that put a requirement on them to provide a certain amount of parking?
Yes.
Is that one and a half parking spots for each individual?
No, I, I think it goes by the number of beds.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, Shawna, that parking can be satisfied by having spots either on that site or in this case, uh, elsewhere on the campus?
Right, they are providing both. And the, the spots that are not onsite will be on the campus, but they'll also be signed, reserved for that student, student that is living in the theme house. So they'll have a designated parking spot. And we, we have three other conditional use permits for the same kind of thing, so it, it applies to all of them, the parking plan does.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening. I'm Gene Markle, Director of Facilities, Augustana College. This year we are opening up, or hope to open up, four theme houses. Some of these houses came to us very late in the, uh, year. And so we're still in the process of dealing with the parking issues. Uh, and we have, we will be coming back because all of our solutions will require, uh, conditional use, discussions on those properties. Most of the houses that we came up with this year, I shouldn't say most, three out of four of the homes that we came up with were already, uh, multiple living homes. One was a duplex, one was an actual fourplex apartment unit. And one was, uh, a home that had been subdivided into three apartments. All of them are being left as is, with the exception of upgrading the maintenance, uh, electrical plumbing, window care, et cetera. This particular one was the only single-family home and it was the only one that was not in an area with other rentals or other areas where the college actually owned adjacent, uh, side-by-side adjacent property. And so we do, it is, uh, back-to-back with college property. And one of our parking solutions that we will be, um, bringing in at a later date is to create a much larger parking, uh, lot along the back through the, what would be considered the alleyway, but there is no alley. It would extend, uh, from thirty-third to thirty-second behind the existing apartment houses on the east side of that block. And then this particular home, or the residents of this particular home would be allowed to park in the new lots that would be developed there. Okay. Uh, this, uh, I better not say anymore. A lot of our home purchases are being used currently as theme houses, but that's not necessarily what we looked at as for the end use. Uh, I'm sure that many of you are aware that, uh, our new president, uh, President Oliver has, uh, put into our strategic plans that we will grow in terms of numbers of students. And that hasn't happened yet, but we are in the process of trying to figure out what we gotta do to make it happen. And we know that to make it happen, we've got to provide, uh, not only a different type of housing for the upperclassmen, but we also have to provide more so that we can at some point in the very near future renovate our existing... renovate our existing residence halls to be a modern setting for the new students and possibly increase the number of students that we can house. So, you know, there's a lot of things that we would like to say should happen in these homes, and in some cases it will, in other cases, we're just going to have to use them as they are and make the best of it. We don't want to create ill feelings with any of the neighbors, and while we were able to design a very nice four-spaced parking behind this particular unit, the long-term goal or gain would have been jeopardized by having ill feelings with the neighbors at that point.
All right. Thank you, Gene, any questions for Gene?
Gene, at the neighborhood meeting, was there any ill feelings?
No, first of all, the house has been used both by non-student and student rental people. And the last few years, it's been college students. And the neighbors were much happier with college students there than they were with the non-student. Across the street are three other rental properties, and the big concern was, well, are you going to take up more street space for parking? Because I own three houses across the street, and I want my people to park on the street. So we do have a very tough restriction of one-to-one parking spaces.
Gene, what I struggle with this is that of building our ordinance in regards to no more than three people in one dwelling.
Well, the theme house concept, actually, when we proposed it a number of years ago, came down to being tied to the border, boarding house that's defined within the city ordinances, and that would allow from one to ten unrelated people living in the same house. The theme house just means that the college has total control over those residents. They have to be students, they have to be involved in the college. They can't even be part-time students if we get tough enough. We have one exception this year because he was living in the fourplex that we bought, and so they grandfathered him in. But otherwise, these are mini dormitories, you might say. What we're doing differently is that each student, in many cases, has their own bedroom. They may have to share a bath and a half or two baths, whatever we can put into a building, but they have their own bedroom, and that seems to be a big drawing.
This is a four-bedroom house? Is that what you planned?
It will, there are two upstairs already, there were two downstairs. We're going to clean, or I should say, there's one downstairs, and we're going to clean those up. One downstairs, the kids have agreed that they would rather have one shared bedroom and one room for study, recreation, whatever. So they themselves are going to make it. They're taking two bedrooms and using them as one.
See, what I worry about is that landlord across the street. He's worried about his parking going, hey, wait a minute, Augustana gets to put four, five, six kids in a house, why can't I?
Well, exactly, but he's got to go through the same problem that we go through, this conditional use. Then he can do what he wants, and that's all we can tell him. They're not actually looking to do that. I just think it's interesting that every time we open up a theme house, we do two things. We bought the house from somebody, and that somebody had people parking on the street, right? We're not allowed to park on the street, so now we've taken those vehicles off the street, and we've opened up more street-side parking. Well, what happens is that a lot of our commuter students will use those. In this particular case, the commuters wouldn't want to use them too far from the school. In the case of events in the Elmwood Center, we've got probably three spots now open on that street that wouldn't have been open.
You have four houses now, or how many houses do you plan on doing this?
Actually, we've got, I think these are number ten, eleven, eight, nine, ten, eleven. This will be the eleventh theme house.
Would these all be adjacent to the college or on the same street?
They are all on the perimeter streets, most of them Summit and West Twenty-eighth. We have one on Thirty-third Street and one on Grange directly across from the Elmwood Center.
Are your dormitories full? Is it, are you overflowing?
Pretty much, they're not a hundred percent full, but we're able to more easily respond to the request for private rooms. Students coming in to college today, by and large, have never shared residential facilities. We're getting a lot of single-family children, we're getting a lot of two- and three-family children that don't know how to live with each other.
The new building you put up at Thirty-third and Summit, it's a beautiful building, by the way. I think that really added to the neighborhood. Is that providing two- and three-bedroom housing for...
That is thirty-two beds, all in single-bedroom situations.
I think that's the ultimate answer, I think.
That's where we're headed. And the lot that we're talking about right now, the particular house that we're talking about right now, we own three, one-half of that side of that block. We own now a large portion of this other side of the block. If we're able to get one more lot, we would have room enough to put another one of those types of facility up. And that is actually the master plan, it's kind of slowly being developed from the housing, is to develop apartment-type units, maybe not all two-story, but, and we did purchase other lots at Twenty-eighth and Summit, between Prairie and Summit, and that's going to be another area that we can put one sizable unit. But each time we put one up, we have to come up with a parking and go with it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Gene. Anyone else care to speak to this item? Item twenty-six. If there isn't any, is there commission action?
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion to approve the conditional use with the two stipulations.
I'll second.
There's a motion in the second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I have a little bit of history with Augustana. I just recently had a conversation with its president, we talked a little bit about the theme house. He reminded me that the students that live in these houses have a tremendous amount of money at stake. And if they make any mistakes and cause problems, of course, they are, and Gene can probably confirm some of this, at risk of losing their ability to not only stay in the theme house but also remain a student at Augustana. And one of the stories that Rob related was a complaint call that he received from a neighbor, and after some investigation, they found out it was not an Augustana student that had caused the problem. And the neighbor, when Rob called her back to tell her that this, in fact, was somebody else, she said, "I should have known." So again, I support these theme homes because I know that Augustana needs to have a little bit of swing space while they're in the process of acquiring property. I don't think this, as Gene suggested, is their ideal solution to student housing, but it is the interim condition that they find themselves in until such time they can do something different and probably larger.
Any other discussion? If not, there's a motion in a second for approval on item twenty-six with two stipulations. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, item twenty-six is approved. Item twenty-seven is a conditional use permit in the S Industrial Institutional District to allow student housing lying within one hundred and fifty feet of a residential district, 2408 South Summit Avenue. Staff report.
Okay, this one is pretty much the same deal, although there was, they did hold a neighborhood meeting, and no one came up and talked to them about this one. So staff is recommending approval of this location on Summit Avenue with two stipulations. One, that the parking plan is updated to change, with the change in use permit, they did provide us with an amended parking plan. And two, that the theme house is owned and operated by Augustana College. And that concludes staff report.
Questions, Shawna?
Mr. Chair, Shawna, that parking plan you referred to is campus-wide.
Correct.
So it's not just a parking plan related to this one property, it's the campus parking plan.
Right, and that they provided an updated parking plan considering all four of these conditional use permits. So we have one plan that covers everything.
Any other questions? All right, applicant? Do you have anything to add for this one, Gene?
No, except this is the triplex, and it's, was purchased, we're cleaning it up, and it's going to be used as-is.
Okay. Thank you, any questions for Gene on this one? Thank you. Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
I'll move for approval of item twenty-seven with the two stated stipulations.
I'll second.
All right, there's a motion in the second, is there any discussion? Item twenty-seven with the two stipulations, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, item twenty-seven is approved. Item twenty-eight is a conditional use permit in the S Institutional District to allow student housing lying within one hundred and fifty feet of a residential district at 1210 and 1212 West Twenty-eighth Street. Staff report.
Now, this particular property is proposed to house up to four students. No other changes to the building or site are being proposed. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting, and people did attend. There was some concern expressed about students in the neighborhood that park in front of neighbors' houses, and also about the possibility of activities that were disruptive for families. And perhaps the applicant can respond to those concerns. Otherwise, the conditions for approval are the same. We have to provide a map of two parking spots in the Menlo Two Campus Parking Lot assigned to this theme house, and the theme house to be owned and operated by Augustana College, and that concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Gene? Anything to add on this item?
Not a lot to say, except this is a duplex that was put together by the previous owner of the land. The area is Grange and Menlo on Twenty-eighth Street. There are a number of homes down through that area that rent either fully or partially to students, both from Augustana and USF. The problem that the college has on discipline is that if we don't own it, we can't really control it. We do work with the city police quite often. They will come to us before they take action to break up a party or whatever. We do take action on, against students who have repeated violations, you might say, of drinking, particularly if they walk on campus with liquor. Inasmuch as that we require our freshmen and sophomores to live on campus if they're not living at home, we try to control, you know, that type of activity as well, but it doesn't always work. We do know about the parking up and down the street, and we've worked with that for years until we were able to put together enough land. And we are also in the process of dealing with possibly enclosing Twenty-eighth Street. We've made the tentative discussions with the city on that. Once that's done, we hope to reorganize parking on that, pull more of the parking problems off of the site, I shouldn't say the sites, the adjacent streets of Menlo, Grange, Walts, Prairie, Summit, and provide more for the residential students on the Twenty-eighth Street area.
Gene, do you have campus security? I mean, do you have a security staff on it?
We have a campus safety, yes, and they do respond when they're called by the neighbors, and they will go down and check, they will try and talk to the students, particularly if they recognize any of Augie students. We know where the Augie students live, and we try and keep track of, you know, what their behavior is based on that. But as long as they're on private property rented to them by somebody else, we just can't, you know...
Do you have a policy as to how far out you might go to do this?
This theme house? Our master plan really restricts us pretty much to the border, the perimeter of the campus. The last house, the first one we talked about, actually was outside of the plan, but because it was adjacent to the back of our apartment situation and because it was a portion of a very large part of, a large block, piece of land that we would be able to make better use of with another large apartment, it's the only reason we bought it.
Gene, I think it speaks well, no one's come up to say anything negative about this.
We've had a lot better comments. We've done a few things when we were talking about theme houses, too. We've taken down some slumlord places, and we hope to improve both the attitude and the area.
Thank you. Anyone care to speak on this item? If not, is there commission action?
I'll move for approval with the two stipulations.
I'll second.
There's a motion in the second, is there discussion?
I'd just like to say that I see these as positive changes when you think about the fact that these are homes that are being rented to students that really didn't have any formal monitoring program, and now, you know, the Augustana College is really taking them from what they are and improving them because their students are in them now, and now Augustana has a measure of control over it. So I see these as positive changes within that neighborhood.
Any other comments? If not, item twenty-eight with two stipulations, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, item twenty-eight is approved. Item twenty-nine is a conditional use permit in the S Institutional District to allow student housing lying within one hundred and fifty feet of a residential district at 2404 South Summit Avenue. Staff report.
Okay, the applicant is proposing to improve this property for up to eight students to occupy it. No other changes to the building or site are proposed. The applicant did indicate that they had the neighborhood meeting, there were no comments received adverse, and we're recommending approval. To, with two conditions, provide a map of two parking spots in the campus parking lot west of Summit Avenue assigned to this theme house, and the theme house to be owned and operated by Augustana College. That concludes staff report.
Any questions for Steve? Thank you. Gene, last one.
We've got a lot of questions now, Gene.
This makes perfect, this is the existing fourplex unit. Each unit has its separate exterior entrance, and we are maintaining it that way. Each unit has two separate bedrooms. And it came with two occupants that we've maintained, allowed to stay in there. One was a regular full-time student of Augie that was renting from the previous landlord, and the other was a part-time student. Otherwise, they've been assigned to other students on campus. Most of these residents are juniors and seniors. There are no sophomores living in the theme houses.
Okay, any questions for Gene? All right, thank you.
I appreciate your comments.
Anyone from the audience care to speak on this item? I don't see any, so is there commission action on item twenty-nine?
Mr. Chair, I'd move for approval of the conditional use with the two stipulations.
I'll second.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All right, and item twenty-nine with two stipulations, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, item twenty-nine is approved. Item thirty has been deferred, but I'll read it into the record. It's a final development plan, Subarea A, Forty-first Street, Ten, Plan Development District, to allow construction of sixty-eight townhome units, Phase One, and sixty-six units, Phase Two, at West Forty-first Street and Gernell Avenue. That has been deferred by the applicant. Phase One and sixty-six units, Phase Two at West Forty-first Street and Grinnell Avenue, that has been deferred by the applicant. Item thirty-one, final development plan in subarea B, Shadow Creek Plan Development District, to allow construction of an office building at East Sixty-ninth Street. Staff reports.
Adam Roach, Planning Department, intern. The applicant, Mr. Todd Knudsen, in the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, is proposing a general office complex. It will be a multi-tenant building, the site available for expansion to the west, which is an approved land use. The site is located on the southwest corner of E Sixty-ninth Street between South Charger Avenue and South Cliff Avenue. Street access is provided at the northeast and northwest, which is a shared access corners via Sixty-ninth Street. An access easement is noted on the plan. The application exceeds the minimum front yard setback of fifteen feet with twenty-four and a half foot yard. No rear or side yard setbacks are required because it is not located adjacent to in our district. Regulations and parking is provided. The plan depicts one hundred and forty-seven proposed stalls depending on a potential mutual access easement with the commercial structure to the east, which is not noted on the plan. For medical use, the applicant would need to provide two additional parking stalls. The site plan depicts twenty trees to be planted, there are twenty-four trees required due to the amount of parking stalls. Landscape requirements also state that one tree is needed for every fifty feet of street frontage. The plan needs two more trees and street frontage to meet minimum requirements, which is a condition for approval. The building is a three-story multi-tenant commercial, which includes all three floors of office spaces for lease. The trash enclosure is located on the southwest corner of the site, it's twelve by twelve on the on the plan. Materials are not indicated, which is a condition for approval. The site falls within a regional BMP watershed, the BMP is not yet designed or constructed. Therefore, an interim BMP will be needed onsite until the regional BMP is operational, which is also a condition for approval. Sixteen points are included in the staff report. Because the subject application is allowed in the subarea and otherwise conforms to subarea regulations, staff recommends approval of the final development plan with the following stipulations. Number one, trash enclosure materials to be similar to those of the building. Revised plans to show interim BMP. Number three, trees are planted in front and the front yard is required for Lot Two A, Shadow Creek Edition. And that concludes the staff report.
Questions for Adam?
I think we should make up a bunch of questions for Adam.
Mr. Chair, I think you did a great job.
Thanks, sir.
Agreed. Thank you. Is the applicant here?
Good evening, Jared Nestji, thirteen oh five West Thirty-eighth Street, on behalf of the applicant, Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Just to add that the goal of this project is to further their ministries and the things that they do. Answer any questions that you might have.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Nestji, do you concur with the stipulations?
I do.
Does your client?
They do.
Any other questions?
I just have one, I understand that you're sharing a driveway with someone, do you have an easement for that at the current time?
Uh, there's a shared easement and the Fellowship of Christian Athletes have talked with the hair salon to the east and no, no issues regarding that shared access.
Other questions, Jared?
The Fellowship of Christian Athletes will have an office there?
Yes.
And then have other space?
And then have, yep, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else in the audience care to speak on this item? All right, see none, is there commission action?
Mr. Chair, make the motion to approve the final development plan with the three stipulations.
I'll second. All right, there's a motion to second, any commission discussion? All right, item thirty-one, three stipulations, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, item thirty-one is approved. Item thirty-two is a preliminary subdivision plan for Prairie Gardens Edition, Phase Four at East Forty-ninth Street and South Sycamore Avenue. Staff report.
Thank you. Staff does note that the city engineers have completed their review, at the time of the staff report, they hadn't. They have requested that the applicant revise and resubmit the preliminary plan. The plan is drawn to scale, the names of the adjacent subdivisions have been provided and some of the consternation that the city engineering and planning staff has with the application is that we have an approved preliminary subdivision plan to the south of this particular plan, which is, the street patterns isn't lining up. And the applicant has indicated that they have discussed with the the property owner to the south revisions to both subdivision plans. Primarily, this subdivision plan revision includes realigning Fifty-third Street to be all on this subject property rather than half on the property to the south. And that is in keeping with something the property owner to the south is agreeing to. However, we don't have an approved preliminary plan that accommodates this switch and the different street pattern on this subdivision plan. The required area for the lots and underlying zoning district as required in the subdivision ordinance for subdivision standards has not been provided. The applicant is here this evening to discuss the, and is aware that the zoning was not verified with the lots that are presented. The primary problem with this is that we don't have street connectivity and the applicant is here this evening to discuss issues regarding connectivity and street patterns in the area. Because the application offers a coordinated land use and urban infrastructure and fosters urban development, staff is recommending approval of the subdivision plan. However, it it is, would be good to hear from the owner to the south and also assurances that it could meet the two stipulations. And one is that city engineering can approve this plan prior to council action. And the other condition is that the preliminary plan is resubmitted with changes, including connectivity for the subdivision to the south. And that concludes staff report and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Shawna?
Shawna, you said that engineering did have a chance to review this, approved it's subject to?
They asked that it be revised and resubmitted.
Before we act on it or before city council?
Ordinarily, they, they are, our, our condition is that it is signed by the city engineer prior to council action.
So you as staff will have a chance to review it even though we won't before it goes to city council?
Correct.
Thank you.
So if you wanted to remain the, that the city engineer has to sign and approve it prior to council action, that would be an important stipulation to leave on there. And then it wouldn't be able to be go acted on the council until such time that the city engineer is ready to recommend approval.
Isn't that pretty important to staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Other questions?
So you would suggest a revision of stipulation two that say the plan is submitted with the following changes prior to city council approval?
Correct.
Is how we would modify that to?
Right, yes.
Provide clarity to it.
Yes.
Any other questions? Shawna? Is the applicant here, please?
Good evening, my name's Eric Willidson with Willidson Land Engineering here, representing the owners of the property, Prairie View Development. Shawna explained, there's been some changes to this. This is a major amendment to a previously approved preliminary plan. The changes that we're asking for tonight were essentially precipitated by the sale of the property to the south and the new owner's request to modify the previously approved preliminary subdivision plans to their future land uses that they have planned for it. We have met both with that developer, he is here tonight. Have also met with engineering staff on a couple of different occasions to speak to these issues. One of the things that, you speak to the connectivity issue, one of the, on our original plan, there's an additional forty-acre piece immediately to the east of this that was also approved and is approved as part of the original preliminary subdivision plan that has some connectivity to the south. Right now, immediately to the north of that lies Harmon and Park and the city's desire is to connect Harmon and Park in some fashion to Fifty-seventh Street through what will be a future phase of the subdivision. That has not been, that that exact route has not been decided yet. That would be the connectivity, north and south to Fifty-seventh Street. The property immediately to the south of Prairie Gardens has another access already approved to Sycamore Avenue and Fifty-seventh Street. Therefore, we eliminated the previous connection, north-south between the two and have revised it to move, realign Fifty-third Street and and not have the connectivity between the two lots. With that, I guess I would answer any questions that you might have. Again, we have met with engineering, the engineering issues, we're confident we can resolve with them prior to council action. That that to us should not be a problem.
Questions for Eric?
Eric, you got me very confused describing all of that, but I feel confident.
Like I said, it, it's a change in a previously approved plan. The the new owner of the property to the south is here, they have worked out an agreement with these owners for this change in land use to the south and then the change in the design of, and the layout of Prairie Gardens to accommodate that. Both owners are comfortable with that and as long as staff is okay with it, like I said, I think we can get through the engineers' concerns and actually, it's engineers that asked us to remove the portion to the east until we could resolve that with some other property owners and and they can determine exactly how they want to connect Harmon and Park with Fifty-seventh Street because we understand they're going to lose the access out to Highway eleven, future South Dakota one hundred at some point in the future.
Thank you, Eric.
Any other questions for Eric?
Thank you.
Anyone else care to speak on this item?
Daryl Verick, Verick Commercial Real Estate, eight twelve South Minnesota Avenue. I am one of the owners of the property to the south of this. And we've met with Har's and Ronning's across the street, I've got a handout to give you right here. We've had extensive meetings with the engineers on this layout. Now, this layout was the original one, we went to the engineers with. What we did was move, what is it, Fifty-fourth Street, we moved that farther to the south.
Daryl?
Yeah?
Why don't you go to the line and I'll castles that so you can explain?
I need one now, Randall took mine. Oh, all right. We moved Fifty-fourth Street farther to the south, which the engineering department liked a lot better because it doesn't come out at as close to Fifty-seventh as it did before. The property on the, it's not up there, oh, there it is. What we did was line up our street, we got together with Ronning's and we lined up our street and our development that would line up with Ronning's across the street. And then, in order to get Dubuque out to? There you go. In order to get Dubuque out to Fifty-seventh, we went and met with Bill Hobson and he's agreed to sell us that much of the land right there to get Dubuque down to Fifty-seventh, to get it out there where there would be a controlled access. Well, in the meantime, it happens with me many times, the engineers sent me out on a Lewis and Clark expedition. And that was to bring in the whole neighborhood, to bring those in, and we've had meetings with the city. Bill Hobson, um, let me see. Bill Hobson owns the property to the east of us and to the south of us. We've met with the city, Kim Buell from Schmitz Kolda is their engineer. The city definitely has to get the road from Harmonon Park out to the north without, because they're going to lose their access when the Beltway goes in. And so, right now, what we're in the process of doing is redesigning this whole area down here to put the, all the utilities into the Highline easement along there and there's a high-pressure gas easement. And we're working with Hobson, Bill Hobson, and we'll have a meeting here shortly, he's getting all of his land drawn up by Schmitz Kolda. But at this point, there is, with the engineering department, we're doing this based on the engineering department's request. So I think everything at this point is going forward and we've addressed all the engineer concerns on connectivity. Plus, we've got all the neighbors involved in trying to get the whole area worked out at one time right here. So I don't, I don't know of any opposition from anybody that's involved at this point. And pretty much everything what we've done up to this point is what the engineers have asked us to do. And we should have this resolved prior to the city council meeting because we were supposed to get back together this week. We're just waiting for Kim Buell to get Bill Hobson's drawings done. And what that will also do, if you'll, on this map here, it doesn't show it, it would eliminate Dubuque coming out where it's at, it would move it farther to the east. And that would be your first intersection coming off the Beltway to the west of the Beltway and it would line up with the road across the street. And then, we would not have Dubuque where it's at, we would continue to the east and come out where the city wants, one major road over here. Our road would continue into Hobson's farther and this would be a controlled intersection and it would be the first intersection off of the Beltway that's, which will be their major north-south route. And at this point, it's going to end up way better for everybody out there involved. And that would be the only, we would have a right in and right out on our street, the closest one to Sycamore. And then the controlled intersection with the median cut would be the one, first one to the west of the Beltway at that time.
Questions for Daryl?
Everybody's getting along, Daryl, I mean?
Yeah, oh yeah.
The landlord.
Yep. It's a lot easier to get this stuff done when you get everybody up to you.
Anything else for Daryl?
All I can say is, Daryl, I got my cheaters on and I can't read one street name on this deal, so next time, if it could be a little bit bigger.
Well, I got a call at five oh five from Shawna to get this stuff down here, sorry about that. So I had to grab whatever I could find with my CAD guy already out of the office. I was tickled to find this one.
Mr. Chair, I would, I would like to have Eric come back up to the podium for a second. Thank you. Eric, I guess we could probably pass on this and let the city engineering people sort through this. But I don't know how you could possibly come up with a design, at least if I was in city engineering, that I'd feel comfortable recommending, recommending to city council in, what, two weeks? Isn't that when this goes to council, two weeks from now?
Correct.
How how do you get this land that Daryl's representing to the south configured and presentable in two weeks?
I don't think that's the intent here. Essentially, we're just looking at the Prairie Gardens, the the amendment to the Prairie Gardens preliminary plan. And we're not seeking to do anything with Daryl's property to the south. He's just presenting that that is the concept plan that they are coming back with. Whether or not that totally flies with the council or with you, I guess it's certainly up to you. We have simply modified our plan to accommodate that or something similar to that.
I was just curious because I, for one, am not comfortable without having more information, more detail as to how all this is going to happen.
The the things to the south?
The things to the south and and how you get in and out of this. I mean, probably some great ideas, but we don't have any, any indication right now.
Certainly, our access to, you know, the Fifty Third Street access is at the same place. We have not proposed our, any accesses previously out to the east other than what's already been approved on the original preliminary subdivision plan. We simply have, have taken out the, the access points to the south.
Steve was just drawing here, there's, there's clearly the need to have something. And I like, Jesse can't read this stuff. Is this East Fifty Fourth or East Fifty Third there on the bottom? What's that? No, no. Next one. In, in Eric's thing right here.
That's Fifty Third.
Yeah. I, I just can't imagine that we're not, yeah, going to have to do something like that somewhere.
Actually, the collector's street that comes from the north is Alpine, which is the furthest most right. Yep. It would come down there and take the connectivity, I guess, that we're looking at would take Sawtooth Trail, which is just above that detention pond, above the north of that, go across to Dubuque and take, and Alpine would essentially turn into Dubuque to go to Fifty Seventh. And that would be the, the route through that. Typically, the engineers don't want to stray through, and neither does planning. Want a straight-through route. If you go to the north, Alpine does not, at Forty First Street, does not line up with, with Fernwood. You have to go to block to the east to get out to Fernwood again to get back through that subdivision. They, they don't necessarily, aren't straight-through routes as minor collectors.
Thank you. Eric, I'm sorry. On your preliminary subdivision plan on the location map, was it you or Darryl's idea to put a picture of the state of South Dakota there and point it to Minnehaha County?
That's, that's a standard item that you'll find on all of my plans.
Really?
Yeah. Upper left-hand corner. Shawna doesn't always like them, but.
I think, yeah, I think staff would like a little.
I always put state of South Dakota and the county that, that we're dealing with on my plans.
All right, any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you want to say something else, Darryl, quickly?
Yes, I do. The configuration that you have in front of you is what the engineer suggested. The connectivity down to Fifty Fourth Street, they did not want because they want everybody in our subdivision to be leaving out to Sycamore Avenue. And if you bring in the connectivity down there, if you look on the old plan, if you put the old plan back up there, they're getting Fifty Fourth Street farther away from Sycamore. And instead of having that one that goes all the way through, the only difference for connectivity to get out would be Dubuque was moved over a hundred and fifty feet to the east is all. So, actually, this is a better traffic plan based on what the engineer's suggestion is compared to what we had up there before.
Darryl, or Mr. Chair, Darryl, has, has the planning staff seen this layout of yours?
Ah, no. No, we're not, I'm dealing, right now, I'm not dealing with my land usage plan because I don't know if, how we're going to do this, whether we'll do single-family, private streets or whatever. All, all I've been trying to do at this point, well, we've met with planning staff before on it. All we're doing at this point is getting all the streets in there the way the engineers want it. How we'll come back with all that usage between Hobson and our, down the road. This is, this is their recommendation, the engineer's recommendation on how they wanted to see this road in here. We've met with them three, four times on this. And so, everything we've done to this point is what the engineers have asked us to do. And I didn't want Harz to be delayed any longer because they made a major change in their plan. That major east-west road in there was not functional for both of our properties because we did not have enough, enough property facing that street. So, everything that's addressed in the original plan is addressed here with actually probably a better way of getting out of Dubuque right there.
Anything else, Meredith?
No, no, thanks. No, because we've met with Mark Cotter and Shannon Austin and no curb-cut Chuck. Excuse me, that's a joke around the development community. But yeah, we've went through this. We've been through numerous meetings and brought all the landowners in. Ronning, Harz, all of us have all got together to get all this done.
Thank you. Anyone else care to speak on this item?
I have a question for Shawna. Shawna, if we approve this preliminary plan, the other land will have to deal with what we approved with. Would that not be correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, is there commission action on item thirty-two?
Mr. Chair, for the sake of discussion, I would make the motion to defer this for thirty days. I am just uncomfortable with the completeness of the plan as it relates to engineering and planning staff, both as a part of this piece of property and those properties that surround it.
Is motion for deferral?
I'll second for discussion.
All right, there's a motion and a second for a thirty-day deferral. Commission discussion.
I don't know. I, staff is recommending approval. I'd certainly want Meredith to feel comfortable. I'm not sure how the developers might or might not feel in regards to that. I guess I, you know, I'd like to know what some of the rest of the people feel about it.
I, I certainly agree with, with Meredith. There are a lot of unknowns here. And though it's, impedes upon Harz to wait another month, I think that it's just too soon in the process. I think we need to know what's going to happen. And probably would be best if they would come back at the same time, both the south and the north.
What would we like to see in the next thirty days? I mean, I'm not, size of the lots, definitely where the, the streets are going to be.
Mr. Chair, I think it would be nice in thirty days to have engineering approval and certainly do away with most, if not all, of those stipulations.
Any other discussion? There is a motion and a second for a thirty-day deferral. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign?
Aye.
Item thirty-two is deferred thirty days till our next meeting. Item thirty-three, preliminary subdivision plan for the Friends Edition at Fifty Seventh Street and South Dakota Highway eleven. Staff report.
Planning commission has seen two applications on this property in recent history. First one being a future land use amendment for the comprehensive plan, to allow commercial development of the property. And the second one to be a rezoning of the property to commercial, for C-four commercial development. And now, they're proposing a preliminary subdivision plan, which is fairly simple in nature. Basically, two streets, one a cul-de-sac and one a collector's street. The purpose is to subdivide the subject property into five lots for future commercial development. Staff was advising the applicant to include a traffic study before going to the city council so that they can show the capacity of the cul-de-sac and collector's street for commercial development-type traffic, forty-five acre-plus development, actually fifty-two acres of commercial development. And as you recall, the neighbor to the east is Sanford Medical Systems. We do not know what their plans are for development yet, so we can't really show connectivity there. And connectivity to the north is not being shown because of a major drainage way. The applicant has been meeting with the property developer to the north. And there are negotiations going on at the current time for the location of sewer and water connections back and forth, actually assisting each other in development of their respective properties. There is a continuing discussion about the location of collector's streets in the area where those should be tied together between the two properties to the north. And staff is recommending approval, subject to engineering approval of those plans. And the following stipulations. One, a traffic study is required. Two, it's subject to access management for this development on South Dakota one hundred. And three, that the drainage way in the subdivision be included in engineering and construction plans and final plans. And that concludes staff report.
Questions for Steve?
Steve, as I look at this, I'm looking at page, it doesn't have a page. It shows lots two, three, four, and five.
Yes.
That one right there. We're along Fifty Seventh. I, I, I'm looking for, how would you get to lot five? Or is that what you, waiting for engineering to approve?
That's what we're indicating as having to comply with access management requirements for that intersection. If the intersection does not allow access from Fifty Seventh to that particular lot, they will have to modify their subdivision plan to show adequate access, which could be done with a private road, I mean, this is as big as the Western Mall. It could be a private road that's shown onsite. It could be an extension of the cul-de-sac, a loop road put in. At one time, they did show a loop road that came back out onto Fifty Seventh. And the location of that access was not approved at that time. I think the engineering is still discussing as to what access management means on Fifty Seventh and the location of any property.
Would that be important for us to know?
It would be, I think it would be important for the marketing of the property. If you need that because you want to know what type of development would be given access, then yes, it would be important.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thanks, Steve. Is the applicant here, please?
Eric Willitsen, Willitsen on Engineering, nine oh two South Cleveland Avenue, here representing the owners of the property, Robert Ray Farms. Again, I understand some of Steve's comments. I guess, and that's the one on, that we're not asking for connectivity to the north. We absolutely are asking and have indicated a road to go to the north. We have no access to South Dakota one hundred being allowed. So, we have no access to the west. We asked for an access right-in, right-out, as depicted on the earlier plan with a sketch plan at the eighth mile point. And that was nixed by engineering. One of engineering's comments on this plan was we didn't have enough access. I'm at a bit of a loss as to how we can get more access when they won't let us have the additional access. Tell us where we can have the additional access and we'll put it in. Right now, the only access that they're allowing to that property is on that quarter-mile line. The, to answer your question, Ken, we would absolutely be required to do some type of internal street easements, private roads, something similar to that for this complex to, to manage the, the traffic within. Certainly, it's a large commercial development. Traffic and patterns and traffic studies would certainly be a, a part of the development of this. I'm not sure, since at the preliminary plan stages, we can't be guaranteed access whether or not a traffic study is warranted when we don't know with the access or when you can't prove the access. So, we're not opposed to traffic study, but we'll do the traffic study at, at the appropriate time with final plans, final development plans, when the actual uses are identified for the property and we've got a better handle on, on what type of traffic we're looking at for the site. Obviously, it's going to have to work with the access that we have, with the type of zoning and the access management policy for South Dakota one hundred. We understand that. One of the things, I guess, that I do want to stress is that we are one hundred percent and in favor of connectivity to the north. Engineering's indicated that, that their theory about crossing that, what they're considering a major drainage way. I don't know that there's been a drainage study done to identify it as such. But at the same time, with no access to Highway eleven, how could you not create an access to the north? Right now, there's a preliminary subdivision plan and final plans in the works or approved for the property to the north that has over, I think I counted, over three hundred residential lots up there. Another forty acres of multifamily and.
When you're saying.
Twenty acres of commercial on the corner.
Are you talking about the church property? Are you talking about?
Actually, to, to the north of the church property.
To the north of the.
To the north of the church property. That subdivision plan has seven streets that connect directly to the south to what would be Forty Ninth Street. We're hoping to connect into at least one of those and feel that it would be ridiculous not to connect these two together with at least one street north-south. The forty acre, or the one hundred and sixty acre development to the north, to my knowledge, only has two accesses onto Forty First Street, zero to Highway eleven as, as we do. And you've got to provide some connectivity between those two developments.
Any questions for Eric?
I suspect the traffic study is trying to determine access points, is what I'm sure engineering's trying to get a handle on.
Access within, you know, the realm of that corridor is very strictly limited. We, you know, we, we need to comply. We're hoping, and we feel confident that engineering would go along with, with possibly a right-in, right-out at that eighth mile point. So, at least to provide some access in that respect. That's certainly being done on a number of arterials, you know, throughout the city. And that, that we could get that worked into the picture, to at least have a right-in, right-out and the eighth mile be an intersection with a, with a control signal. Again, as they mentioned, Sanford Health owns the property immediately to the east. They've essentially agreed to the, the road access that we have north-south as that borders their property as well and it provides them with an access point. They own the property all the way east to the half-mile line, which would be another major collector running north-south. So, you have those two access points. We don't know what their future plans are for the land. Can only speculate in a moment.
Thank you, Eric. Questions?
Eric, clarify for me again. If you don't know how you're going to connect to lot four and five, actually, both of those, and you'll have to come back anyway, why, why isn't that worked out now?
Lot four obviously has a connection on the north-south road. Lot five, like I say, would either be accessed with, you know, a road that would come down, another cul-de-sac or a private road to access it. Actually, I forwarded this plan to an architect today without the cul-de-sac to possibly do an entirely private road structure through the entire development, commercial development. Like I said, it is a large commercial area and will require a vast amount of parking and, and interconnecting roads within it, which all would be subject to final plan review and final development plan review for all of the development that goes in there. I think we've alluded to in the past that lot one is slated right now, is, is under contract to become a theater complex on that twenty-acre site. Obviously, a, a large amount of parking and, and access needed for that as well. Certainly, all those things would be worked out in the final plan and the, in the final development plan stage and that the place for traffic studies i- is not in the preliminary plan stage. Clear?
No, not really, but, okay.
Well, certainly, that, you know, this is a preliminary plan, subject to change, you know, by final plan, you know, to show. know, by final plan, you know, to show internal streets and final development plans, just by the sheer size of it, will require ultimate, you know, reviews by this body and engineering and planning staff.
Other questions for Eric? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else here to speak on this item?
Mr. Chair, could you bring Shawna to the podium again, please?
Shawna, please.
Has there been a preliminary plan yet on the theater site, lot one?
No, there's, this is the only preliminary plan that we've had south of the drainage way. There was one north, not adjacent, but to the north
Top loss.
That's been zoned and a preliminary plan has been approved.
Shawna's staff is recommending deferral on this item?
Yeah, and Steve Randall presented and wrote the staff report, so don't ask me anything because I don't know.
Sit down, Steve, get up here. I'm sorry.
Staff is recommending approval on this item.
Right, staff has recommended approval. Knowing a lot of the things that Eric just mentioned, we think that that can be worked out in the future. We do think that there is a major discussion going on right now between adjacent property owners on how to make those connections. And I guess unless you really want to be involved in identifying those connections and approving them, I think you can approve the plan as, as presented. If you would like to be involved and, you know, state what reasons you, why you would like to be involved in locating those connections, then you would have to defer action tonight.
I'm not sure if that's necessary. Steve, it is a large, a large parcel. I think we're talking
Think Galleria.
Close to 60 acres of commercial.
Think Galleria. I mean, you remember what you saw when you first got the concept plan, and then the preliminary subdivision plan, and then the zoning and the
Conferencey Plan update and all of that.
What would a preliminary plan approval accomplish for Eric and his landlord, marketing?
As he said, he's in discussions, he's in discussions with potential buyers of one, if not several, of these lots as he's presented. Once they sell the property, basically, they've created the value and they can trans, they can plat and transfer once the preliminary subdivision plan is approved.
But the plat has to be coincides with this preliminary
Has to coincide with the preliminary plan, and of course, they're, you know, they're taking a risk, I guess, and getting the preliminary plan approved and then not being able to plat it the way they marketed it, but we've seen that before.
I'm sorry, you lost me there.
Well, developers have come in with the preliminary subdivision plan to just get out on the street and start marketing, and then things change. People don't want to buy it the way that's being presented, so then they come back and revise their preliminary subdivision plans so that they can market it again. And then whoever buys it maybe is responsible for plating it for transfer of ownership.
But isn't that allowable up to the final preliminary plan?
No, no. Has to be platted to transfer ownership.
Jeff Smith for planning staff, when Steve Randall and I review flats and a lot of you planning commissioners have to sign those flats, we are required by subdivision ordinance to review the flats against the approved preliminary plans. And so we basically pull the flats out and hold them up next to this, a plat next to this preliminary plan, and when I see lot three, I'll look at it and see if it's coexisting with this preliminary plan based upon the ordinance that I have to review it, and if it's not, I can't approve that plat. And so then I would require this applicant to come back and revise their plan until I
I think we're going to use preliminary plans.
No, we're not.
Can I get a plat? Do I get a
Hang, hang on. Steve, do anything else to add?
All right. Which, again, brings us to the three stipulations for approval. Number one, a traffic study is required for approval. On the one hand, the applicant is saying that the traffic study could be deferred to final development plans or other plans. The engineering recommendation, recommendation to us, and we have included in the stipulations for approval, is that a traffic study is required. This plan is not going to be approved by the city engineer until a traffic study is provided. And that traffic study is going to do a lot to determine access, collection, connections to the north and so on, so that's why staff is comfortable with it.
I'm not having as much of a challenge with, with this one.
Let's, let's move on. Thank you, Steve. And we'll call for a commission action on 33, and then we can discuss it after there's a motion and a second.
I will move for approval on item 33 with the three stipulations as stated.
I'll second that for discussion purposes.
All right, there's a motion and a second with three stipulations. Is there commission discussion?
I understand that this maybe isn't everything that we want to see, but I, I don't consider it highly unusual to not understand everything about the road systems at, with the developments as they're wrapping around them and just the condition of where they are. I, I'm not incredibly uncomfortable with this because I think there's a process to help it unfold, as opposed to the last one where they were moving parts all around that we could see and kind of relate to, and so this one's a little different for me, and, and I'm pretty comfortable recommending approval of it.
I'm uncomfortable with staff's opinion as to a preliminary plan when it comes to plating versus the engineers.
The fact that there's a misunderstanding as to the process is what was outlined, out. But I, I don't know that that's relative to our vote here tonight, but
Well, I said, and I think if there's four lots and they sell one of them, it will bring another personality into the picture that, but I think you still have to end up with a, with a final plan, then engineering, and we end up having to approve.
Other discussion? Item 33.
Mr. Chair, I mean, this is a pretty normal process for us where it's, it's all market-driven design instead of design-driven marketing.
Right, right.
So we'll see it many times before, before it's all done, and we'll have an opportunity to review each of these plans, I guess, but, you know, it'd be nice if, if the development community would get used to the fact that the, the rules are changing for access, and you need to think out of the box like other communities around the country have that have been doing this for quite some time. But again, I, I don't think there are a lot of options here because of the, where the property is situated and so forth, so I could support it knowing that we'll see this come back several times in the next, you know, several years.
Any other discussion? All right, if there isn't any on item 33 with the three stipulations, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Item 33 is recommended for approval. Item 34 has been deferred by the applicant, but it is a preliminary subdivision plan in various zoning districts for the legacy addition at North Ebenezer Avenue. Again, that one has been deferred by the applicant. Item 35 is a preliminary subdivision plan for the Tuscan Club Estates Edition at West 85th Street, west of Hughes Avenue. Staff report.
Thank you. This, you, on the consent agenda, approved a rezoning request for this new residential development, and the residential will be developed under the RA, or excuse me, RS1 residential district as well as the RD, because the applicant is proposing to do a community building, which will incorporate a, a pool area, outdoor sport court, and other community facilities that will be private to this development. Those types of facilities are allowed in the RD district with a conditional use permit, so you will be seeing another application in public hearing prior to construction of those private club amenities. This particular plan was, meets the subdivision ordinance, it provides the preliminary plan requirements and provides property in areas within 660 feet of every direction. The plan has been significantly revised since the first submittal, and, and staff does commend the applicants for working closely with planning staff and, and engineering to complete revised plans in time to be before you this evening. Because the preliminary plan does offer coordination of urban utilities and infrastructure and offers efficient and orderly growth, staff does recommend approval of the preliminary plan with the following condition, and that's that the city engineer approved prior to council action. Staff has received the recommendation for approval from the city engineer, so that condition is not, no longer necessary. And that concludes staff report.
Thank you, Shawna. Any questions? Thank you. Is the applicant here, please?
Hello, it's been a long night. Brian Ross, 4508 West Cottage Trail, Sioux Falls. I'm here to represent CRC Property Group. I'm the development manager of the property and part owner. Just wanted to say, you know, briefly, since it's been so long this evening, that we had a neighborhood meeting last Tuesday. We received a tremendous response. Everybody was in favor of what we're doing out there. We worked real close with the city to actually design the final layout that we came up with. This is about the fifth layout that we had. We were going to do some waterways and things like that, but that wasn't cost-effective, so we simplified the plan. It's going to be a public street there, Tuscan Club Circle. There will be a HOA attached to the clubhouse and the pool facilities to maintain that. We feel it'll increase the property values around the neighborhood, and the neighbors seem to be in favor of it, so we're excited to get it going.
Questions for Brian?
Just a quick question, Brian.
Sure.
What sort of housing are you proposing to put on these lots?
They're going to be single-family, semi-custom Tuscan-style homes. They're going to range in square footage from 2,600 to about 3,400 square feet.
Okay.
And the minimum lot size, the narrow lots are a quarter acre, and the four that you see on the right-hand side there are all half-acre lots.
Okay, thank you.
They're very deep lots, only 65 foot wide.
Right.
Are you going to lay the houses in lengthways?
Well, the nice thing is we have a minimum 40-foot setback as part of our requirements, 40-foot rear yard. However, the lots are almost 200 foot deep, so realistically, the houses are probably going to be anywhere from 50 to 70 foot deep with around a 50-foot footprint for the house for the width. I've been developing out in California for about 12 years now, and out there, they try to squeeze as many lots as they can into each parcel, and so we're, we're very experienced in designing something that's, has some nice elevations for, and good street curb appeal with a nice layout on a narrow lot.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, Brian, having been in California, you're obviously familiar with zero lotline zoning and patio homes and things like that. Do you think we'll ever see that in Sioux Falls?
Well, you know, as this land becomes more expensive, as it, it is as we speak, you know, this is, used to be ag, agricultural land, and, you know, we're paying over $50 to $60 an acre for that. If that continues, I, I think you'll see some developers coming in and trying to duplicate what they've done in those, these areas that are becoming congested. Hopefully, that doesn't happen around here, though.
Well, there's nothing wrong with zero lotline zoning or patio homes, and it's very suitable for certain people, empty nesters, or
Sure.
Maybe that don't need a big yard for kids, and so I'm not suggesting this is the right place for it, but as you see these narrow lots, you start saying, how can I end up with not only a front yard, but a, and a backyard, but a side yard as well?
Sure. Thanks.
Other questions for Brian? Thank you. Anyone from the audience here to speak on this item? There isn't any. Is there commission action?
I'll move for approval of item 35 with no stipulations.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I think there was one stipulation in that
It was removed by staff.
Oh, it was removed.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. 35 is recommended for approval. Item 36, conditional use permit monitoring program. Staff report.
Adam Roach, planning department intern. Once again, it's the yearly conditional use permit monitoring program. Little background on the conditional use permit monitoring program was initiated, initiated in 1991 to monitor the status of conditional use permits previously submitted. Data gathered is intended to produce an accurate depiction of conditional use permit historic trends and analyze completeness of stipulations set forth by the planning commission and city council. Information that was gathered and my little journey with the, the monitoring program, 56 sites were approved and eligible for review from 2006. Of the 56 sites visited by staff, 40 were compliant, meaning they were meeting all the stipulations set forth by the planning commission and city council. 12 sites were abandoned, meaning the project did not follow through as planned, and four sites had unmet stipulations, failure, failure to comply with the city standards. Yearly comparison of the past five years, as you see, 2006 was a pretty good year with a 90% compliance rate.
Next slide, please.
I'll look at the violations, for the four violations that we did find. This one here is a daycare, failure to provide two designated parking spaces for pickup and drop-off for the kids. Safety is a big concern here, having access to the front door.
Next slide, please.
Failure to screen trash, trash receptacles. The building in the background there is a brand-new building. There were two, they're supposed to provide screening for the dumpsters, which they did provide, they just failed to put them in there. Next slide, please. This is site plan on Kiwanis for Dollar Store. The top there is a drainage easement.
Next slide.
That is where the screen fence should be, the northeast corner of the lot.
Next slide.
And that is what it should look like, but have failed to meet the requirements. Next slide. Landscaping does not meet minimum standards of zoning ordinance. There's over 200 feet of street frontage right here, and they did not comply with the landscaping standards of one foot per 50, or one tree per 50 feet. That's what it should look like. Next slide, please. Some recommendations for improvement or continued success with the monitoring program. When building permit final inspections are performed, ensure conditional use permit stipulations are met and noted on final inspection reports. The conditional use permit monitoring program reinforces the importance of applicant accountability. Continuation of the program will only benefit the city of Sioux Falls. Adam, open for questions.
Adam, when they're not compliant, what do you, what do you do?
I send out a letter stating, stating the violations.
Certain amount of time to make the correction and do what they said they were going to do.
I'm not sure about the timeframe.
Any other questions for Adam?
What's the follow-up after that, Adam?
That's up to the building and zoning services.
Adam was a student. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll ask for public input, but there's no one here, so is there a motion to accept the report?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. The report is accepted. Item 37 is adjournment. Is there a motion?
I'll adjourn.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Meeting is adjourned.
Can you get staff?